I'd like to welcome you to our June 24th City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council, and such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. I ask that we please stand for our invocation. I'd like to recognize Pastor Kathy Thacker, pastor of First United Methodist Church here in St. Cloud. And if you will remain standing after she shares the invocation, then we will do our pledge allegiance. It's good to have you here, Pastor Thacker.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in St. Cloud, for this community, for each and every person here tonight, and for the blessings we enjoy in this city. We ask your wisdom and guidance on our mayor, Nathan Blackwell, council members, Lynette Matheny, Dave Askew, and Keith Trace, for our city manager, Bill Sturgeon, and for all our citizens presenting tonight in this meeting. We thank you for the life and longtime service of council member Chuck Cooper. And we ask your comfort and peace upon his family and blessings with all those who grieve with them today. We continue to pray for healing of our country and the world from the coronavirus pandemic, and we lift up the families of those who have lost loved ones. Please keep all the residents of St. Cloud safe, protect our police officers, our firefighters, our emergency management personnel, and all first responders. And as we look forward to celebrating the Fourth of July and taking summer vacations, watch over all our families. May they experience much-needed rest and renewal, and bless our country. We pray tonight for clarity and wisdom in all our presentations and proceedings. May the discussions that we have and the decisions we make be in keeping with your will and plans. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And thank you, Pastor Thacker. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
On behalf of the entire City Council, I would like to express our sincere condolences to the friends and family of council member Chuck Cooper. In addition to serving his country, Mr. Cooper served the city of St. Cloud for nearly forty years, including being elected to the City Council four times and serving on a variety of city boards and committees over the years. Following his passing on June 12th, we flew the city flag at half-staff for a week, and as you can see, his seat here on the diocese draped with mourning bunting, and city staff have left moments for him at his seat. We were warm to see the outpouring of support from the community as well, as they filled not one but two photo mats with remembrances and messages to Mr. Cooper's family. All of us on the council had a great deal of respect for Mr. Cooper and certainly his dedication to the city. Chuck brought a wealth of experience to the council and a passion for the city of St. Cloud. We will always be grateful to him for that.
Chris, I think you're here.
Our town is certainly better for having had Chuck Cooper in it, and he will be missed.
I think we have it loaded up, and I've got some...
Libby, our prayers are with you and with all of the family and certainly the friends
It should be right.
of Councilman Chuck Cooper.
You should have a controller.
Oh, okay.
And we have a picture that has been signed by council members and staff that we'd like
There you go.
You're going to trust me with this? All right.
Yeah, it is a little scary, isn't it?
Yes. And I have some teammates with me that I'm going to introduce here shortly when we do
to present to you at this time.
the federal update, so excited to have them in town here.
Could you just sit over here? We'll get a picture together.
The full Captain Planet GR team is here today, so you can blame us or give us credit, one or the other. But I'll jump in here, Mayor. So first and foremost, it was a good session for the city, and you know, you don't win them all on some of the home rule issues, and we can get into some of that. But from an appropriation and just generally protecting the interests of the city, we're
Thank you.
pleased with the results.
We pray.
But I would be amiss if I didn't thank our legislators.
Thank you.
Representative Fred Hawkins in his first term and Senator Victoras both worked very hard on behalf of the city to make sure, and we stayed in constant communication with their staff and them, to make sure that the city's interests were represented in Tallahassee. We already knew we had good representation in the senator, and we've got definitely a bright future with Representative Hawkins. He jumped in despite being Green, obviously a lot of experience in another role on the county commission, but he jumped right in on the legislative process and picked it up very quickly. So we're excited to be working with him for the next seven years, at least, as they say. So talking about a few things to dig into, sorry, impact fees. You probably saw there was a bill that dealt with impact fees. Your neighbor to the north, Orange County, was sort of the poster child, not in a good way, for this piece of legislation, mentioning some of the impact fees that they were looking to increase. Probably very much unfairly so is the poster child, given all the concessions they've given over the years on impact fees. But nevertheless, it was used as an impetus to restrict impact fees across the board in the state. No increases more than every four years. Twenty-five percent is what the normal, or fifty percent. And then, but the escape clause for that, if the city's ever looking down that path, is if you can show extraordinary circumstances, and that includes a study within 12 months, multiple meetings at the council level to review it, and then a supermajority vote. Again, there's a feeling amongst the legislators that impact fees across the state have run amok, and this was their way to rein it in. And again, like I said, your neighbors to the north were sort of picked on for that a bit unfairly, but nevertheless, it's there. But I would say y'all and staff work with us if we find that there's issues, because they're already starting to see some issues with this. Some cities have their impact fees raised automatically every year, like essentially adjusted through COLA or inflation or what have you, and there's some questions of whether that captures that or not, since the ordinances were adopted before this year and it's just automatic raises. Some would say they're not captured, meaning you can continue with those. Others are saying, nope, you've got to go back to the table, and you can only do it once every four years unless you can show extraordinary circumstances. So I lead with that, because that's, if I could talk about a loss, that's a loss, because it takes some rights away from the city. They did try to put some escape clauses in there that if the city has an extraordinary circumstance, they can move forward, but something to pay attention to, and we'll work with Mr. Sturgeon and staff to make sure that as we see some kinks in it, we can fix them next year. Online sales tax. This is something, two years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court came down with the Wayfair decision, which essentially said that states could collect that sales tax provision on the retailer, not on the consumer. Now, I know, you may already know this, in Florida, you are already required to pay that sales tax. But for brick-and-mortar retailers, they're required to collect that, but there was no impetus on an online retailer to do that. And I know if I asked everyone behind me and in front of me to raise their hand, if everyone that bought an Etsy bag and wrote a check and sent it to the Department of Revenue, I'm sure all the hands would be raised, and everyone here is law-abiding citizens. But this may surprise you, most people are not, and it's estimated this is a billion-dollar impact to the state that they're going to now enforce this. Essentially, for the lawyers in the room, it's kind of like a long-arm statute. If you avail yourself to our state, not necessarily with a physical presence like Amazon with their warehouses and other groups, think more like Etsy or eBay, but you avail yourself to our state and you have a certain amount of sales, we are now going to require you, the retailer, to collect that sales tax as opposed to making us as individuals do that. An interesting part of that is the discretionary sales surtax is part of that. So there will be local money out of this, 1.2 billion, about 200 million of it is local money spread across the state, and a billion is with that. A couple more things on that is, you might have heard, our unemployment tax is depleted after this pandemic and the recession. So one of the proceeds from this billion-dollar windfall, if you will, to the state now that we're collecting it, will go towards replenishing our unemployment compensation tax insurance rolls. And when it gets to 4.017 billion, they will then take that and reduce the business rent tax from 5.5% to 2% on every dollar, with the goal of eventually eliminating the business rent tax statewide. So that's a win across the board, especially for brick-and-mortar companies. It's going to, those of you with your employees or your employer yourself, it's going to take the burden off you of probably a large increase on the unemployment tax. And then as well, now we have some parity between our brick-and-mortar shops and online retailers. Doc stamp tax. This is probably the most interesting and controversial, and now we've got a ballot initiative since we sent this presentation to you. So middle of session, the presiding officers announced that they were going to take that doc stamp tax that I'm sure we're all familiar with, especially this year with the real estate market the way it is, and take what the Sadowski Trust Fund, which most people sort of synonymous with affordable housing, and take that and say, the original proposal was a third, a third, a third of that, a third to housing, affordable housing, both sale and ship, which is for rental assistance and for development of projects, a third towards the resiliency fund that they were creating, which deals with flooding and any other kind of resiliency projects around our state, and then another third for wastewater and water quality protections. Take the priorities of the presiding officers, and you can figure out where that was. Pushback from the governor's office, other various interests like Florida Retail's and a lot of us, the cities and counties across the state saying, hey, affordable housing's important, we've got some issues here. They reduced it to a half would go toward affordable housing, so up from a third to a half, and then the other half would be split into, so essentially a quarter each for the resiliency and for the water quality. That passed, the governor signed it, and it essentially is going to be 200 million for affordable housing this year and going forward, and 100 million each out of those two funds for the other two buckets. The bad news is what should have been 400 million for affordable housing is now reduced to 200 million. The good news is, as you're well aware, that Affordable Housing Trust Fund had been swept for the last 10 or so years. So zero percent of 400 million is still zero, you know, so 50% of 400 million is 200 million. So it's a win when you look at it that way. The Florida Realtors Association, not wasting much time, they announced a ballot initiative, and they certainly have the finances to support this ballot initiative, that they want to, in the Constitution, require that all of those funds go towards affordable housing. So, and that did not sit well with some of the legislators that wanted to divvy that up some, and so they're probably going to have an interesting session, as I joked with my friends there, having done that. But that will likely be on the ballot in 2022, which will put another wrinkle into this. It might switch it all the way back and make it such that it can never be swept, which means that'll be a guaranteed amount of funding going there, so pay attention to that. Home-based businesses. This is a bill that came down to the wire, not surprisingly during the pandemic. There were a lot of folks that moved their business home, or most of us were working from home for a while, and it put a spotlight on, okay, what does that actually mean? Because the dirty little secret is a lot of folks were running their businesses from home already, especially smaller businesses that didn't have a lot of industrial needs or any kind of retail front. So what would that mean if they now codified that and said, you know what, you can do this from home up to certain things? Up until the last minute, they were making tweaks on that. If you recall, there was going to be no restrictions on parking, and thus you could have someone that has a pretty popular business, even a retail front, and 50 cars out in the street neighborhood. That's obviously problematic. You run into those same issues with some of the Airbnb neighborhoods near our theme parks. What they ultimately decided was to cull a lot of that down and back, to essentially say that as long as it's front-facing to the road, you can't tell there's a business, meaning like you can't do stuff in your backyard, that if there's puffs of smoke or even large machines that can be seen from your backyard, that wouldn't fly. And even from the windows, right? You can't have what appears to be a business environment from the windows if it's street level. The whole idea is to maintain, for lack of better terms, the facade if it's a residential neighborhood. My guess is this bill is one that gets tweaked and workshop next session, because they were kind of building the plane as they were flying it. They knew they wanted to do this and support a lot of businesses that were being started and operated out of homes, but they didn't necessarily know how to do it, and they were realizing, talking with folks like us and others in the industry, that there was going to be a lot of unintended consequences if they ran with the original version. So we're proud that it got culled back into a much more manageable version, but my prediction is next session, there'll be a lot more done to it. And then finally, a nice win that's been in the process for a lot of years is legal advertising. As you, no doubt, or your staff, no doubt knows, when you make certain changes to certain land use, zoning, what have you, you have to put it out for legal advertisement in a local paper. For us, it's the Sentinel. There might be some other publications that you could put it in, and that's not cheap, and it adds up quickly for a lot of budgets. And so there was a push from the legislative process to cull that back, to, they wanted to eliminate the requirement altogether. That's difficult. I always say, don't pick a fight with people that buy ink by the barrel, although I guess the Sentinel and No Papers buy ink anymore, but they certainly buy broadband space. But that did pass. There were some compromises in there that required some advertising in the paper to kind of announce this is where you go to find this information, but it will definitely reduce the expense side for a city, a county, or whoever needs to advertise. So that's a nice win that we're happy about there. From an appropriation, you can pay our marketing staff for that. Got a nice little airplane logo there. St. Cloud Seaplane Base got 500,000 approved by the governor. We worked, we stayed in close contact with DOT. As you know, when you put things in the DOT silo, they can be a little controversial, the work plan budget from the legislature, but we were proud of having worked with them, working with the governor's office, and certainly the great team you have here, that we were able to protect that from getting a veto, where a lot of the governor's vetoes came from that work plan area, because they see the value, right? They see what's happened to your neighbors to the north and to berries and down in South Florida, and see a lot of opportunities with this, that not just, that will benefit the city, but benefit the state's seaplane industry and kind of ecotourism that they're trying to build here in Florida. So that's an exciting development. And again, thank our sponsors. We take credit because we're paid to take credit, but really, the guys who take that very low-paying job to go to Tallahassee are the ones that deserve a lot of the credit, Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Torres. Some other stuff just on the appropriations front. Visit Florida was funded at 75 million. 50 million was state general revenue, 25 million was some of those federal dollars that they had. Good news, bad news. That's a good amount of money that they need to help re-promote Florida to the rest of the country and the world, but the 50 million in general revenue was moved from recurring to non-recurring. What that means essentially is, and you guys know it with some of your budget items, now every year, they're going to have to sing for their supper, as opposed to usually, it's kind of baked into the budget unless someone really puts up a fight. Resilient Florida Trust Fund, I kind of mentioned that Speaker Sprouse led off when he was inducted as speaker, saying, it doesn't matter how climate change occurred, it's happening whether we like it or not, especially here in Florida, in our South Florida area with flooding, but we have flooding issues all across. They took 100 million from that Affordable Housing Trust Fund that got split up, and then another 400 million from the federal dollars. So thank our friends in DC to help with that. So that will be something that if we have flooding issues on some of our roads, and I've mentioned this to Mr. Sturgeon and others, we need to start looking into this, because this is a pot of money that's now going to be available. Most people think of flooding South Florida, right? Sea level rise issues, but this can be applied anywhere in the state, and I think there's going to be pressure to apply it to places not just in South Florida, right? Because there, you know, you've got to spread that around a little bit. And the same with water protection and sustainability. As we look at septic issues and we look at water quality issues, that's something I would encourage us to explore with DEP if we have some projects, because there's going to be a lot of money that they have there. Wrapping up, I mentioned affordable housing, now 209 million, and that's how, and that was approved by the governor. And then Job Growth Grant Fund. This is one where, if you're not familiar with it, the guy, it's, I hate using the word slush fund, because there's negative connotations, but the governor will get 50 million to go on the 24 million that he didn't spend from the previous year because of the pandemic, that it can be used for any kind of infrastructure. It doesn't have to go back through legislative approval. So you can't be an incentive to a business, but if we know a business is going to come here or in the county that we want to support, but they need a better road, or they need a better road, and the utilities to run under the road, if you will, to the property to make it accessible, such that it's worth their time and effort to relocate here, the governor can swoop in with two, three, four, five million. We've seen some big splashes, up to 8 million on these projects to help get it done. But it's anything when you think infrastructure, which I realize now, given the debate in DC, that's not so clear. I'll let my teammates explain what infrastructure means. I've heard all kinds of definitions, but that is something exciting, because it's something we or the county for sure can tap into as we see good projects. Wrapping up here, major kudos to your staff. I know you all were briefed on this, but Central Florida Water Initiative, there was a piece of legislation that was proposed that was going to codify a DEP rule that was very detrimental to not just the city, but a lot of our neighboring cities and counties here in the central Florida area. Working with Senator Broder, who happened to be, he's in Seminole County and also happened to be the chair of the Senate Committee that was shepherding this, we were able to, with your legal counsel and also with other like-minded lobbyists, able to get DEP in a position where they took a more compromised approach to make sure that for cities like ours and others, that we pay our fair share, we don't pay the abundant share, for lack of better terms. We all get it. There's pressure on all of us to start culling back our water use and preparing Florida for a more sustainable future. But the way the rule was originally drafted, as many of you know, was going to unfairly punish cities like ours to the benefit of others. So they were able to realign the rule such that it was more beneficial, probably not more beneficial is the right way to do it, more fair or fairer to the city of St. Cloud, which we're excited about. But kudos to your staff. You guys have some great folks in your utility department working on your behalf that was able to educate us quickly. I'm not going to pretend I understand utility issues as perfectly as others, but we learned up quick, and we did all the advocacy stuff, and thank you for your team on that. And then I'm going to hand it over to Doyle and Blair, who flew in all the way from DC area to give an update. They're going to introduce you to some of our delegation members and talk about some DC stuff, and then of course, we're all available to answer questions here at the end.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Sturgeon, it's good to be with you. It's always good to come home. You know, I think, you know, and I know the mayor knows, you and I spent some time together in Washington just before the pandemic, maybe the last visitor we had, right before it ended. I grew up here, it's good to always come home. Blair, I'll introduce Blair Hancock, who's new to our staff. She joined us earlier this year, and you'll get to hear from her in a minute. As I always do, I bring somebody who knows what they're talking about rather than rely on me, so I'm going to let Blair do all the detail, and I'll do the fluff at the top. We've been thrilled to work with the city this year. It's been a, you know, we had a little slow year last year, it's really picked up this year. You put a couple trillion dollars on the table, and everybody comes to town and wants to, they're part of it. And we've been a part of that process, we've been a successful part of that process. Two things that have really changed. One is the pandemic funding. You had a significant amount of money come through last year in the CARES Act and other acts that pushed money down, not directly to city of St. Cloud, but through the state and to you all. A lot of questions about how that funding is able to be spent, and we've been working closely with your staff on making sure we get that money spent the right way. And then now, we've had the American Rescue Plan, which was the 1.9 trillion. We quit talking to billions and millions. We're now in trillions. It's DC. 1.9 trillion-dollar spending plan that was passed in earlier this year, had a good bit of money for cities and counties and that. We're still in the process of implementing that. There's still a lot of questions that we deal with, with Treasury, on how to get that money out. Then we're now discussing President's proposed American Jobs Plan, American Spending Plan, and as Chris talked about, the infrastructure plan. We'll go a little bit into that in just a minute. We work closely with your delegation. Let me strongly, can't say this strongly enough, Darren Soto is a champ. He's a hero, he's done a great job. We work closely with his office. He's been really easy to work with. He cares a lot about what goes on here in St. Cloud and all over Osceola County. He's been a real, real help to us. Our senators are a bit of a challenge, I'm just going to be totally frank, and I would say that's if they were standing here. They're a little bit more ideologically driven. They chose not to participate in the earmark process, which is certainly their right to do, but it's been a little bit harder to deal with them. So as we go to look to try to get money allocated to the city, they've been helpful in providing information and calling the administration and doing those sort of things, but decided, both decided not to participate in the earmarking process, which has put us a little bit at a disadvantage as we go through the process. Let me talk just a moment about process, and then I'm going to ask Blair to come up. Let me see what we've got. So, two things really, we talked a little bit about the pandemic funding. The second thing that happened was they reopened earmarks, and they call them community project funding. They couldn't call them earmarks because it's not politically correct anymore. What that did, it was a relatively small amount of money, like 3% out of the total appropriated amount of money, but it did start that process. And what's important about that is, we're really just sort of learning how to work the process. The members are learning how to do it, the staffs are learning how to do it, and the folks like us are learning how to do it. So we're very early in on the stages of how that all works. So this is a start. We were successful, I'm going to let Blair talk about some of our successes, but I think as we go into next year, we've learned so much from this year. Those projects will be expanded, more people will participate, we'll have more opportunity next year. Timing-wise, that'll be a part of the appropriations bills, so those bills will probably come through late in December, before we actually finally know what's available to us, because the fiscal year for the federal government ends October 1st. They will not finish by October 1st. They will do, as you all are familiar with, a continuing resolution, kick that can down the road, probably till December, almost to the 1st of the year, and probably do all that work at the 1st of the year. At the same time, you hear this debate about infrastructure and reconciliation. Infrastructure is the bill, the president agreed today with 20 senators, to try to put together a framework for a 1.2 trillion-dollar infrastructure package. It's about nearly 600 billion dollars more than what was the baseline spending. That's got to work its way through the process. Also working my way through the process is the other 4 trillion, 6 trillion, if you're Bernie Sanders, amount of money that's going to come through the reconciliation process. All that will move through the process and come to fruition late this year. So we're going to have a very, very busy sort of November, December, sorting all this out, getting all this money done, and then starting back in January, we'll start the process again. And we'll start the process again with a better knowledge of the needs of the city and a better knowledge of the process. Let me stop there and ask Blair to come up and talk a little bit about the specifics of each of these.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you hit the high notes, but I'll just add a little context to the conversation. So the COVID-19 response, Congress has passed six relief bills, spending $6 trillion, which is actually the most the United States has spent since World War II, and actually exceeds what the US spent during World War II. But the part that's most important about the American Rescue Plan to you all is the $350 billion for state and local governments. And as Doyle alluded to, there's a lot of frustration across the country from Treasury on the interim rule and how exactly these state and local governments are going to spend those funds. So there is some information coming out on that, and we'll expect a continuous rollout of FAQs from the Treasury Department. And then also Doyle talked about the appropriations process and the return of earmarks, which at the federal level, we call community project funding. And St. Cloud does have a project that was sponsored by Darren Soto. Each member is limited to 10 projects that they can put forward, and with Darren Soto covering such a large district, this is really a huge success to be included in that. So the project is $2.5 million for an alternative water supply, and that is something that we're seeing a lot of with the infrastructure conversation around, and even around the COVID-19 response that includes water infrastructure. So I think Doyle gave a good summary on timeline that we're expecting with that, but we'll also go into just a little bit on the infrastructure debate. And so we dotted down a bunch of the different numbers that are rolling around, and I don't want you to pay too close attention to those numbers, but likely, if you've been following the news, you hear a lot about infrastructure right now. And I just wanted to demonstrate that there is a lot that's floating around in various conversations in different parts of Washington, DC. And it looks like a framework, as they're calling it in DC, has been agreed to just today, between the White House and Congress. So more information is coming out on that. The total package is going to be around $1 trillion. And so, Doyle, did you want to add anything more on that?
No.
funding. And St. Cloud does have a project that was sponsored by Darren Soto. Each member is limited to 10 projects that they can put forward, and with Darren Soto covering such a large district, this is really a huge success to be included in that. So the project is $2.5 million for an alternative water supply, and that is something that we're seeing a lot of with the infrastructure conversation around, and even around the COVID-19 response that includes water infrastructure. So I think Doyle gave a good summary on timeline that we're expecting with that, but we'll also go into just a little bit on the infrastructure debate. And so we dotted down a bunch of the different numbers that are rolling around, and I don't want you to pay too close attention to those numbers, but likely, if you've been following the news, you hear a lot about infrastructure right now. And I just wanted to demonstrate that there is a lot that's floating around in various conversations in different parts of Washington DC. And it looks like a framework, as they're calling it in DC, has been agreed to just, just today between the White House and Congress. So more information is coming on, out on that. The total package is going to be around $1 trillion. And so Doyle, did you want to add anything more on that?
No.
And yeah, so, so more information is coming out on that, but that's the framework that's agreed to, so.
And the only thing I would add on the infrastructure package is, and I sort of referred to it before, this is the beginning of the package. It's still got to go through the Senate and the House. It's not clear that they will get the votes they needed in the Senate. The group that got together and negotiated this bill was about 20 bipartisan senators. That's a pretty good number, but you need 60 to pass anything in the Senate, as we know, because of the filibuster. A long way to go from 20 to 60 at this point, but at least they've got that framework. If they aren't able to get it through that way, they'll add it to the reconciliation package later on. That's the process by which you could pass things with just a simple majority, a majority party, that would be the Democrats. They were going to add a tax package to that and a number of these other spending packages. So that's our, that's our quick update. We're happy to answer any questions you have or go into any more detail that you'd like for us to talk about.
Well, we certainly appreciate all the incredible work that you guys have been doing, and it certainly has been paying off. And we have any questions from council at this point? Thank you so much, and good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see all of you. Chris, are you done?
I was only going to add, not to keep my teammates here, as we look towards next year, as a reminder, legislative session, I should have said this during my portion, I'm just grateful I'm not wearing the same suit in that picture. It happens all the time. The legislative session is January, February this coming year for 2022, with committee meetings beginning in September. So as we start to look at projects that we want to have Representative Hawkins and Senator Torres look at, and as well as other policy issues that we might want to tackle, whether on defense or offense, sooner is better, as they're already starting to work behind the scenes. And the other thing I would point out as we lead to next session is it's a redistricting year. The block level data is coming down, I think sometime August, September. Florida's going to get one more congressional member, and it's likely going to be someone in central Florida, or if it's not added in central Florida, the central Florida seats will become more central Florida. And what I mean by that is Congressman Soto's seat will become probably entirely just Osceola County and not touch anything else, whereas the Orange County seat will be just Orange County because a lot of folks have been moving to this area. But what's interesting, and I'll tell you the politics, and we can look at it later, but just something to put on your radar is, 10 years ago when they did redistricting, when the Senate drew their maps, no members were drawn out of their seats. When the House drew their maps, and that's why that got challenged, and eventually the Supreme Court redrew it for them. But in the House, over 30 members were drawn out of their seats. So literally, folks woke up the next morning, and even some Housemates are like, oh, I guess we're either going to run against each other, or we're going to have to move. Some moved, some didn't run. But it'll make for interesting politics, because when you, when you have a week, a month left in session, and you find out that they drew you out of your seat, listening to leadership is less of a priority, whether you're Republican or Democrat. It's like, what do I got to lose? I'm not coming back here. So pay attention to that. Hopefully that does not happen to any of our members here, especially our incumbent member, Representative Hawkins. I doubt it, given the way the growth in Osceola County. If anything, his seat may shrink a little bit because of the growth down here geographically, not population-wise. So, but just something to put on your radar, with September around the corner. But I think I can speak for Doyle and Blair, and certainly myself. It's an honor to work with you all. We're very excited to continue in this partnership, and we're looking forward to more success next year.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions for Chris?
Mr. Mayor, if I have just one quick question?
Yes, sir.
And you and I briefly discussed the impact fee issue, because the city does have a ratchet in its impact fee ordinances, and we're certainly continuing and moving forward. But what's the best opportunity, the best way we need to address that as we move forward to next year? Is there something we need to try to get clarified at the legislature about whether that's going to apply? Because we will need to address that fairly quickly.
Yeah. So if we don't get a legal clarification that we can stand firmly on, then I think we need to go to the legislature and ask for some, then this would be an offensive move. We need to ask them to clarify that our particular provision passes muster, just to give us some safety there.
Okay.
Mr. Surgeon, do you have any?
Thank you.
No, sir.
Questions for comments for? Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate you and appreciate the work Tony Robinson's doing for us.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager. I think he has some items he'd like to bring for us in regard to our agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple changes to the agenda. I'd like to add Resolution 2021-156R to the agenda, if approved by the council, and that's to redesignate the July 8th City Council meeting and moving it to July 15th.
Would you give me that number of that resolution again? Thank you.
If I could have the clerk read that.
And remember, under your, under your code of conduct, you have to have, it's not on your agenda. You have to have a motion to add it to the agenda, and then we would have the clerk read it, and then you can take vote on it.
Do I have a motion? Do we add Resolution 2021-156R to our agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, and we have a second from Councilmember Trace, a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. What else do you have, Mr. Surgeon?
Well, we'll need to read, I'm sorry, we'll need to read the, you want to take vote on that now, right?
Okay.
So we need to have the clerk read the resolution in and actually take a vote on it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution into the record?
Resolution number 2021-156R, a resolution of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, setting one council meeting date for July, that meeting date being July 15, 2021.
Now we need a motion to approve that.
Now we need another motion?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, but that's the way your rules are.
Could I have another motion that we approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Now, Madam Clerk.
Do we need to, does anyone?
Yeah, you will need to take public input on that.
Anyone in the public want to comment on this item? If there's not, we'll vote on the vote on the motion, please.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Mr. Surgeon, what do you got for us?
Yes, sir. I have another item in the public hearings, item number one, final public hearing ordinance 202117. I request that be read into the record and continued upon council action to July 15, 2021.
Which one is that?
It's a public hearing, item number one.
Okay. Tell me again what you're wanting done. You're wanting it?
Read it into the record by the clerk, and then continue it to July 15.
To July 15?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, is there, so I need to do that now or later?
We can do it now. We're going to try to do it now, so the clerk could read that into the record.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you read this public hearing ordinance number 2021-17 into the record, please?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-17, an ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to include Part II, City Code, Chapter 8, Animals, Article II, Definitions, Article III, Division 7, R-E, R-1, R-1A, R-1B, Single Family Dwelling District, Article III, Division 10, Table 3-5, Providing Perseverability, Conflicts, Codification, Effective Date.
Do I have a motion that we continue this item to July 15, council meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Askew.
Yep.
Do we have any comment from the public? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Anything else, Mr. Surgeon?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we come to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to, or as soon as is practical there after the person addresses the council. As you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who wants to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. You want to roll on? There we go. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, announce the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any consent items that the council is wanting to address? If not, is anyone in the audience would like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I needed to point out on item B, 21-129R, that the cost only showed amount for the potable water and not just, and not with a reuse, and they had reevaluated that dollar amount.
Okay.
Could I have the Utilities Director come up and explain that, Mayor?
Please do that.
Marjorie.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. There is an error on the total cost on item B of the consent agenda. It's supposed to be a million, $1,001,392.30. The, the rest of the estimate was left off. This includes both reuse piping and water piping upsizing beyond what the initial needs of the project Twin Lakes phase needs, and we were able to actually reduce our, the total upsizing due to some hydraulic adjustments in the rest of our system. So this is actually less than it would have cost.
Could you read that correct number again?
Yes. $1,001,1,392.30. So 1,000,001,392, and then 30 cents.
Okay.
Sorry. I know math. I just. Yes.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, the item in your packet has, in the agreement, the extension agreement is correct. It was just, what we're saying, it was listed on your agenda as incorrect.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say that it is listed correctly there.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. If, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve with the clarification on item number B.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to public hearings. The next portion of tonight's meeting is public hearings, and we have already dealt with number one. That item has been continued to July 15. Brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-49, an ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating abandoned portions of utility easement located east of Jones Road, south of Eagle Road, specifically describing the body of this ordinance, providing perseverance, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the final public hearing for an abandonment of easement. It is the Silver Springs subdivision, and the applicant requested the full abandonment. DRC and staff had no objections to this request, and this utility easement belongs to Orlando Utilities Commission, and it was previously used for light poles, so there's no issue with abandoning it. And there are no public infrastructure in this easement as well, and there are no letters of objection from any of the affected parties. This is an image of the abandonment that's being proposed. It's consistent with our strategic plan for infrastructure, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2021-49, and asks that the city council also approve this ordinance based on Section 5.5.4(c) of the Land Development Code. Any questions?
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience needs, would like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion in our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Clerk, if you'll read item number three?
First reading introduction for ordinance number 2021-46, an ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to amend Article III, Division 19, Section 3.19.5, signed regulations, providing perseverance, conflicts, and codification, and effective date.
One more time.
There we go.
Okay, this, again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director, this is an amendment to our signed regulations in the Land Development Code, and it's essentially to address some concerns that were raised by council members as well as the general public with respect to political signs and to provide continued content neutral code, and also to provide the ability for code enforcement and for staff to better interpret the code as it relates to these types of signs. And specifically, we're talking about Section 3.19.5, which provides exemptions from getting a permit. So this is a table that essentially summarizes the provisions, and it's split between residential district and non-residential. And what's being proposed is identical to what's in the city of Kissimmee, and we thought that was appropriate, given that we are adjacent jurisdictions and that we wanted to ensure consistency between jurisdictions when it comes to these types of signs. So in the residential district, it allowed only in private property, and that you have to receive the property owner's consent. That applies to both residential as well as a non-residential district and multifamily. As far as the maximum numbers, one sign per property, both in residential and non-residential. The political sign per candidate, ballot issue or political issue. So for instance, if there's a property owner that has, is, wants to support three different candidates, they can have three, three different signs representing each of the candidate or each of the ballot issue, the property. The square footage doesn't change as far as the copy area. It is three square feet and can be double-sided. For non-residential, again, it's one sign per property, per political candidate or ballot issue or political issue, and it's 32 square feet. And again, this can be double-sided. As far as illumination, none is permitted. As far as maximum height in the, in the residential district, it's maximum four feet. In the non-residential and multifamily, it's up to eight feet. And as far as the time limit, both have the essentially same provisions, 30 days prior to the referendum, and 90 days prior to an election for a candidate. And it follows the statute requirements for removal. We've also added a provision that in the event that is not removed, that the city will remove the sign per statute. We have not necessarily discussed whether there would be a cost that will be passed on to the property owner for removing the signs, but that's something that the council can decide if they wish to do that as a future resolution for fees. The other part of that table also involved the real estate property listings. Again, there was some confusion, and so we wanted to clarify that as well to make sure that it was also consistent. And in this one, again, it's essentially the way it has been in our code, again, making clear that it has to be in private property for residential, and that has to be at the property owner's consent. That's one sign per property. For non-residential, it's based on the linear front footage of the property. If it's less than or equal to 300 linear feet, then you have one per frontage. If it's greater than 300 linear feet, you have two per frontage. As far as the copy area, three square feet, double-sided, for non-residential and multifamily, it's 32 square feet, double-sided. Six feet height for residential districts, and eight feet maximum height for non-residential and multifamily. Again, no, no elimination, and time limit up on listing the property, and seven days after the sale or lease of the property. I think that's all that I have. It's consistent with our growth management goal, and TRG and staff reviewed it and recommends approval. We received comments from the Chamber of Commerce, and they did not have any objections to this specific item. This item will be going to the Planning Commission. I don't want to date now, the next Planning Commission meeting, so we'll get their recommendation and then bring that back to you prior to adoption.
You done? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Andre, can you go back a couple slides to the political sign?
Sure.
Table? So, one question is, did you intend to have different heights between the political and the So, one question is, did you intend to have different heights between the political and the, um, real estate for the residential district? Because this says four, the other one says six. I was just wondering if you intended to have.
It was, but if you wish to change that, we can.
No, I'm fine with that. I just didn't know if that was a typo or intending. I would like to add to the time limit, when they have to remove the signs. Because we're not saying when the signs have to be gone. You know, I, I would like to see they got two weeks or something after the election to remove the signs.
Sure. I, I believe in the statute, it states that.
Does it?
Yeah, but we can.
Yeah, one oh six point one four three five.
Oh, I don't have that memorized.
Well, that takes away my question, because my next question was, do you know what? And I was going to give you multiple choices.
Oh.
It actually sets forth, it has language that says, the candidate shall, within withdrawing or the end of the election, have thirty days to remove it.
Okay.
So, that's what it's intended to do, that if your intent is you'd like to see the thirty days in the code so that everybody doesn't have to go to the statute, that's probably a good suggestion.
Yeah, I'd like to have it in there, just because I feel like people don't grab their signs, and then we're looking at them forever.
Well, I think, I think the intent, we've talked to the city clerk about this, is that when candidates qualify, we're going to have a, we're going to have a summary sheet of the city's issue with regards, the city's regulations with regard to signs. And we're going to ask the supervisor of elections to include that in the qualifying packet that they receive, so that they'll be aware of it.
So I've heard that, and I haven't checked it, but I've talked to some political folks, and they were saying in some communities, you have to put a deposit down to put signs up. And then that deposit is refunded to you if you get your, you know, if you get your signs up, and if your signs aren't taken up, you know, that like, at least you have some skin in the game. You have to put a five hundred dollar deposit or whatever down to put, to put signs up. I don't know if that becomes more work than necessary. I mean, maybe this kind of helps. What, do you like?
It's a little bit of a challenge. We've been trying to figure out how to do deposits specifically for land development code items. For instance, we were trying to do that for pre-application meetings, so that we don't have applicants constantly applying for pre-application meetings. And we haven't yet have a good solution.
Figured out how to do it.
I will, I would suggest, historically, most of the communities that have those provisions have had them in there for years. They're, they, and they've just sort of hung around. They've, oh, they've, they've gotten good and bad treatment by the courts, uh, because it's basically being, there's a, it's adding an additional expense related to what is considered protected, you know, political speech. So, I think a lot of communities have tried to handle the issue in different ways. And I, I think as Andre pointed out, one of the better ways to handle it is probably to, to be able to have, come back to the City Council with some sort of premise about what happens when these signs are in timely removal, and what are the fines going to be? And to have the fines, remember this, these signs typically end up in two different locations. In the public right of way, in which case they can be removed at any time, or on private property. Uh, and if they're on private property and they don't meet the code and they have to be removed, then the private property owner is subject to getting, to having the fine. And we're, and we're typically able to get the private property owners to comply with that.
Um, okay. The, another question I had was, um, adding things on to the signs. So I've seen people, you know, put flair on the signs, pinwheels and flags and all kinds of stuff. I mean, is that allowable by this code?
It's silent on that provision, so the fact that we're not saying you can't do it doesn't mean.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's something we want to add, like to.
Could, could we take that as a, that we haven't really thought about it when we were working that?
Sure.
We've only looked at the size of the sign, whether if they put.
Yeah, like some people put like streamers and all kinds of stuff, I mean.
And before Election Day, they'll.
They'll have lights and, like, who knows what.
So why don't we take that as a suggestion?
Yes.
Take a look at it.
I, I think, um, the fact that we have illumination as none, we could add illumination animation, something that's, you know, that, that's moving.
Yeah, but I think you're more interested, you'll see these signs sometimes, and people put like.
Like pinwheels.
Pinwheels and banners on it, a little banner flags on the top.
Like things that are, you know, moving.
So arguably, uh, so arguably, that would increase the si, the size of the sign, which arguably could make it. But we'll look at that issue if we can deal with that.
Okay. Um, and then the only other question I have, and maybe this is just my issue, but you have the residential district pool, and then you have non-residential district, so that's, we're saying like, commercial.
Mm-hmm.
And then multifamily. So the multifamily throws me off, so it's like, is somebody going to interpret this? Like, I live in a multifamily neighborhood, like I live in a town home, so I can put a thirty-two square foot sign in my yard?
No, it's multifamily, like apartment complexes. Those are viewed as commercial.
So maybe we just call it commercial instead of non-residential and multifamily, just to be clear that it's commercial? I mean, because I just think people like to read these and kind of go into the gray. The gray.
You think?
So you're like, multifamily, sweet, I gotta, you know, I live in a town home, I'm going to put a thirty-two square foot, I'm multifamily. So I just, you know.
I, I understand, and we will definitely try to clarify that, but a, a town home is considered a single family. What is, what is multifamily, even though it's multiple families?
I just think I would just call it commercial.
Okay.
Like, for me, like, I think that's more clear. Like, the multifamily gets a little unclear for me. That's it.
Well, we would stick probably with non-residential?
Yeah.
And take out the multifamily piece?
Yeah, I think that would be true.
Anything else? Councilmember Matheny?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry.
Mr. Menzeris, do you have anything else at this point? Any other questions? I, I just want to make sure that we understand that it, some, some of these yard signs are often two by two, which means they're four square feet, so we're limiting the size to the smaller, to the smaller, uh, campaign yard signs. Is that not, are we?
In the residential districts.
Yeah.
Well, so, like, the ones we had were two by two?
No, the ones we had were, uh.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Twenty-four by eighteen inches.
Just three squares.
And that's three square feet, but like, again, like Mr. Cooper's signs, I think is with twenty-two by twenty-two, twenty-four by twenty-four.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I think that typical, I, I mean.
I just don't want to, I don't want to create a nightmare for.
Good question.
Is this Kissimmee's code, they, they do the smaller?
Yes, yeah, well, that was one of the things we looked at closely. As Andre pointed out, we, we wanted to, uh, have at least some consistency, uh, because.
Like the uniformity, I like it.
And that's what, so we followed, we felt Kissimmee's was a little tighter than, than the one we had in the city at the time, and so we figured we'd move to their direction, at least there'd be some consistency on it.
I think that's plenty, if I'm personally, just want to make sure we understood that. Does the city of Kissimmee have any kind of fines for, if they're having to remove signs, or if there's a, you know, someone goes beyond the deadline or whatever?
I don't think they do, so.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll keep the street going if you want. I, I'll make a motion to adopt this, but to, to add into the ordinance or the resolution, the actual timeline to remove the signs, and to, you know, I guess, take multifamily off of that and say non-residential.
Again, this is first reading and introduction, so we'll come back with those on it.
Okay.
So, you move it forward, and we'll address those issues.
Ms. Matheny, are you wanting a different timeline than the statute, or something less or the same?
I mean, thirty days is okay.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should be, stay consistent with the statute.
Thirty days is okay. I didn't know that that was in the fourth statute.
Are you done?
Yes, that's my motion.
Good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? I have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Definitely, aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please read item number four?
First reading introduction for resolution number 2021-146R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting fiscal year 2021 annual action plan for the community development block grant program, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the first ordinance to, I'm sorry, resolution for the adoption of the 2021 annual action plan. As an entitlement city, we are required to prepare an annual action plan related to our consolidated plan that was adopted in 2019, was a five-year plan. And in that plan, we are addressing issues related to low to moderate income persons or households, and it's based on eighty percent of the area median income. And so it addresses individuals, households, and neighborhoods. And the eligible uses for this money is for public improvements in facilities, residential rehab, public services, and economic development. The estimated budget that is being allocated to the city of St. Cloud for the twenty-one fi, uh, program year is three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. This is a breakdown of the plan. As you see in the top table, um, we have to date received through our line of credit, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's for, for the prior years. And for this allocation of three hundred and fifty thousand, nine twenty-two, our total allocation would be one million and eight dollars, eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars. What we are also recommending in this, um, annual action plan is to reallocate three hundred thousand dollars from prior years that has not been spent. And this was for money that was identified for purchasing land for Habitat for Humanity. And, um, for each year, we were allocating fifty thousand per lot of the three lots, and we have been unsuccessful. We felt it was more appropriate to utilize that money for an area that would provide the greatest bang for the buck, meaning that we'd be able to use it for affordable housing, rehabilitation efforts. There, we are guaranteed we'll be able to spend the money to repair roofs, repair floors, weatherization, and so on. So essentially, we would be allocating three hundred thousand from prior years to the three fifty this year, for a total of six hundred and fifty thousand, nine twenty-two, for the 2021 annual action plan. The table below shows you the allocation and how that's, would be expended. Because we have to administer the program, the city is allowed up to twenty percent of the allocation, which would be twenty percent of the three hundred and fifty thousand, nine twenty-two. The, the subsequent items on that table refer to the different programs or activities that we'd be working on, community facilities, infrastructure, public services, housing, that's spelled wrong, by the way, housing rehab, a hundred and forty thousand, three sixty-nine, for a total of six fifty, nine twenty-two. The allocation provisions, again, for 2021, we have to have this plan adopted by August sixteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and required to have a thirty-day comment period. This meeting is the public hearing to open the period to take public comment. And, um, there will be no action required at this meeting. Our next steps, again, is to have the public comment period, which is already opened since June seventeenth, and it goes on until through July seventeenth. The public hearing, again, HUD required, will be on August twelfth, and we will submit it prior to August sixteenth to the, to, to the federal government, so that we can then begin our drawdown. Once HUD approves that line of credit, we will have that available to us. So again, it's consistent with the strategic goal for economic development and growth management. Staff recommends approval of resolution 2021-146R. And as I said, there's no action needed by the council tonight, except to allow for public input or comment on this resolution. Happy to answer any questions?
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we have any questions or discussion by council?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to council action items. Number one, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2021-130R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving, approving a water and wastewater agreement from Nacusi Land Ventures LLC for a two hundred and twenty-two unit residential development named Twin Lakes Phase Seven, located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County, on the north side of Alligator Lake Road, south of Nolte Road, east of Hickory Tree Road, and west of Gudwin Road. Authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So Twin Lakes Phase Seven, water and wastewater agreement. Uh, this is the location of Twin Lakes Phase Seven, uh, two hundred and twenty-two residential units. And then this shows where, uh, the city limits are, along with, uh, how close it is to Twin Lakes. And then this outlines the, the particulars on the development itself. The garage setbacks will be a minimum of twenty-five foot. Each sen, single-family residence will have at least four and a half spaces. Uh, minimum of two in the garage, two in the driveway, or HOA documents. Each sen, single-family residence will be a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet of air-conditioned living space, excluding the garage. And prior to issuing any certificate of capacity, the city will receive and review a copy of the recording Declaration of Deeds, covenants, and restrictions. So this outlines, uh, the architectural elevation requirements, facade of homes, and air conditioner pads and condensing units. And a minimum of two trees shall be required per lot. Staff recommends that, uh, this agreement be approved, water and wastewater capacity are available at this location. And with that, do you have any questions?
First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Is the applicant here? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm. Uh, I'm just here on behalf of, uh, Twin Lakes for this, uh, this phase, um, for utility service per the terms of the agreement, as was just described. So we appreciate your support, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would there be any questions from the, from the audience? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of Councilmember Matheny for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you read item number two?
Resolution number 2021-154R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, prescribing the date of the special election to fill vacated Council Seat Three for the remainder of the unexpired term thereof, to date of the primary election if necessary, the nomination period for the candidates, and the precinct locations.
Mr. Menzeris?
Yes, and obviously, this is the resolution that is necessary just to, uh, set the special election to fill Mr. Cooper's vacated seat. The resolution that was in your packets has been changed, and you should have been provided a revised copy of Resolution 2021-154R. Uh, obviously, the city clerk's office has been working hard with the supervisor of elections, who will be conducting this election. Uh, we, so we fluctuated back and forth on the dates. Uh, the, the resolution that you have in place would, um, set the, I'll put my glasses on. That would set the, the, the special election to incur on November ninth of 2021, uh, with the primary to occur October fifth of 2021. Uh, in the event that there are, um, there are multiple, more than two candidates that qualify for election, of course, in the primary elections, if one candidate running receives fifty percent of the vote in that primary election, then they would, they would be elected to the seat. If, if not, then the top two vote getters in the primary would move to the general, to this general, the special election. Uh, the election dates had to change from your packet, frankly, because of the changes that the state legislature made with regard to the time requirements for mail-in ballots that extended the period of time. Uh, and therefore, we, the supervisor of elections, uh, has to, has to have more time to get the mail-in ballots out, which caused a next, a need to extend it. So, again, the dates would be October, uh, October, uh, fifth for the primary, and November ninth for the special election. And it also sets the qualifying period.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we have, Madam Clerk, I have a, your light on.
Yes, I'd also like to add the resolution also shows we added, um, a couple more precincts along with the supervisor elections and our discussions that the population we have now and the history we have of our turnout, that we need to have all the polling places open. So I added three more on to the resolution, and we've, um, she's also outlined the early voting dates, which I added on to the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Those, um, will all be advertised, um, at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Do we have discussion? Questions? Motion by council? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion of Councilmember Askew, and a second by Councilmember Matheny for the adoption of Resolution 2021-154R. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Brings us to item number three, Madam Clerk?
Discussion possible action regarding. Discussion possible action regarding appointments to vacancy on the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, before you'll see I give the handout for this advisory board, we have an alternate number two vacant. We did move up the alternate number two to a seat. I do just need to point out that we already have two county residents, and that's our limit for the voting members and the members on the board. So you'll see the applicants that have applied. We've also noted the boards that have been selected by other committee members are on those boards, and you'll see the ones that have no committees. They haven't been selected for any committees.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have hopefully a nomination by council. We have any discussion questions? Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate James Morcy for the alternate number two on the Recreational Advisory Committee.
I'll second that. We have a nomination for James Morcy by Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Askew. Are there any other nominations? If not, Madam Clerk, we just call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Brings us to item number four.
Discussion of possible action regarding the purchase of an ice-pigging truck.
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. Want to thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation with you, and I wish that Councilman Cooper was here to hear it. So just as background, ice-pigging is one of the three methods that we use to clean our water pipes of resin, most effective for six-to-eight-inch pipe with fairly small runs. About 2,000 lineal feet of pipe is really the best or ideal run. It's typically used in neighborhoods and not in the long, major roadways because of the short runs. We run it through fire hydrants, so it's super-chilled using salt, and it creates a plug, and it pushes it through from fire hydrant, and it pushes it out another hydrant, pushes out any material that might be in the pipe. It does not put customers out of water, but we do ask them to avoid using water for about two hours, which also means that it doesn't require a precautionary boil water notice, which is always an advantage, because that's usually a minimum of 36 hours and up to 48, because you have to have two consecutive negative results. This is a list of all the subdivisions where ice-pigged last year, February through June, quite a few. And this is an estimated annual cost of ice-pigging. So the cost for the truck, the cost that SUEZ gave us was about $1.4 million in 2019. Prices have definitely increased since then, so whatever the CPI for that would cost. If you amortize it for 10 years, $160,000. And then this particular truck has proprietary technology on it. It requires semi-annual preventive maintenance from Canada. They come in from Canada. You have to have a three-man crew with salaries and benefits, and then you also have to have a manager with the expertise to really be able to design these picking runs. So if you have each of the truckloads creates 2,700 pounds of ice, and so how to best push that ice through the system and the size of pipe and the length of pipe takes some planning and design. So operating costs, those are estimated, corrective maintenance and repairs. So the estimated annual cost is about $500,000. It doesn't seem like, in the scheme of things, that it might be that much, but we really need to start doing it now, and we appreciate that you approved the contract with SUEZ. And the used equipment is no longer available. So if we were to even order one today, it'd take six to nine months, assuming that nothing else derailed it, and training would take 30, 60 days. So other factors to consider besides just price? We wouldn't ice-pig on a daily basis. And you all know, anything that's not regularly used will start to degrade. A car in the garage, you know, you need to run things to keep them running correctly. It's not a substitute for swabbing and unidirectional flushing. So if we did purchase an ice-pigging truck, then we would have to still conduct swabbing and unidirectional flushing. And we think in the long term that the unidirectional flushing will be the best, you know, final method to really push any remaining resin out of the system. And remember, it's not as infective in pipe that's less than 12-inch diameter. Even though we have used it, we used it in the 24-inch transmission main originally last year. It just, we took two trucks and a lot of different -- it's very expensive. It's at least $150,000 just to do the 24-inch. And we are considering to do that again this time, but first, we're going to TV that 24-inch transmission main to see what's in the pipe, in case it's settled in the bottom and in the pipe under the turnpike. So, you know, I've kind of gone through this so many times, you probably could do this presentation for me. The swabbing, you can really get a lot done one day, and for doing large transmission mains, the swabbing's much more cost-effective. It's just that it takes people out of water service. And we are planning on doing some swabbing during the month of July. We have a week of swabbing, July 11 through the 14th and the 26th to 28th, so we'll be notifying those customers, and we will be delivering bottled water to them during the time that the boil water notice will be in place, precautionary boil water notice. The pipe still remains under pressure, but even though it remains under pressure, you've had to stop the, you know, the system and push that swab through the pipe. So once you're done with the equipment, the used equipment, once the discoloration is out, the equipment would no longer be used. And, you know, Brian and I, we've talked to a lot of different utilities, and we've, between the two of us, we've worked for several large utilities. If this equipment was really used throughout with large utilities, I would have had one in Tampa, he would have had one in Toho. It's not something, it's not a standard piece of equipment that utilities purchase. Utilities contract with ice-pigging to do some spot cleaning in different areas, just like we're doing, and not continuously cleaning the entire system over and over again. So the unidirectional flushing, on the other hand, that's something that we did do in Tampa on a systematic basis, just like we have done here and will continue doing. So once you're done, then, you've got a piece of really expensive equipment with little to no market unless you find somebody that has a similar situation, and there are a few out there. But they're likely to contract with this company to do the ice-pigging as well. So at this time, it's our recommendation not to purchase new ice-pigging trucks. Do you have any questions?
First of all, does anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and questions by council, beginning with Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Just for people watching at home and in the audience, I mean, could you just kind of quickly define the three different methods? The swabbing, the ice-pigging, and then the unidirectional?
Sure. And for those that are not as familiar with it, we do also have a website that goes through the whole process as well. It's called rcommunitywater.com. So we use the three methods of cleaning the pipe. So one is the ice-pigging, and that particular method uses super-chilled ice, and it's super-chilled by adding salt, just like, you know, they do up north. And they push the super-chilled ice through one fire hydrant, and it pushes any material out through the pipe out another fire hydrant. So you design, it's a very programmatic way to do it, so you look at the neighborhood and you figure out how you're going to best push that material out of the neighborhood. The swabbing is like a giant Q-tip, and it's put in, you know, depending on the size of the pipe, depends on the size of the giant swab. And you push that through, we have installed ports to conduct this swabbing. So there's a special port, and there's a piece of equipment. I can actually bring some pictures, too, because I took a bunch in the middle of the night, overnight during this. And they push the swab in, and they push it through the pipe. They shoot it through the pipe, and then it pushes anything that's in the pipe out through the exit port. And they do that not once, not twice. They do it until the water comes out clear and the swab comes out clear. To be clear, swabbing is, pun not intended, clear, the swab really, pigging and swabbing is the same thing, but to kind of differentiate between the ice-pigging and the line swabbing, we're calling it line swabbing, but it's still pigging. There's lots of different kinds of pipe pigs that are used in the industry. Like for iron pipe, you'll often send a different type of pig through the iron pipe to remove the pipe tuberculosis, which is calcium carbonate and iron in the pipe, and that's before you line the pipe, that kind of thing. So it's, pigs are used throughout the industry. So the unidirectional flushing is a very programmatic, planned, and designed method of pushing material out of the system. And, you know, you look at a particular neighborhood, and if you can get the major amount out with the ice-pigging, you come through and you continue to do the flushing. So you start it, you could isolate a neighborhood with the valves, and then you just, and you go through each neighborhood, and you're pushing out any material that might be in the pipe. And utilities do this, this is the way utilities do clean pipes typically. So as I mentioned, Tampa's been doing it for, I don't know, at least 20 years. And so what you're doing is you're being careful not to push that material into an area that it doesn't exist anymore, right? So you want to make sure that, I mean, that's why you don't just randomly flush the hydrants anywhere, you know, all throughout the city all the time. You really want to think about this. You might do some spot cleaning and spot flushing. So if we get a complaint or concern about a watercolor, we will go out there and flush that hydrant and remove any material that may be in there. But to really clean that neighborhood, it's very systematic and designed. You know, open this valve, close to this valve, make sure this is isolated, and then flow it, because what you're trying to do is create a velocity, the water velocity and scouring velocity in the pipe to push that material out. Is that more than you wanted to know?
No, it's perfect. Thank you. And just thank you for your update on this ice-pigging item.
Councilwoman Askew?
Thanks for that update. You're speaking like an engineer that I'm kind of surrounded by up here. So how many, like lately, just the complaints, is there, have you been, you know, I didn't ask you to bring a graph or anything, but if you, like comparative--
No, but funny that I did.
But, I mean, how are we doing on that? Because that seems like some of the best data that we can get, I mean, you hear complaints, but you're like, has anybody told the city about that? So how are we doing on that?
And that's a great question. So we, since the last update I gave you, which was, I think, not last council meeting, but the council meeting before, we have had a little bit of an uptick in complaints, or I guess it's customer contacts per week, so they call about the watercolor. And that would include calls or work orders, something through our application, email, anything. And it is, we have 29,000, remember, we have 29,000 accounts, so we serve about 70,000 people. And so the weekly amount last week was about, it looks like it was about seven, which is higher than it was a month ago, which was, you know, none. So, and it actually went up to nine the week before that. So we do have a few more. We had about, I brought another map, because we're doing a lot of planning. So we had a few in Pine Chase and a few in Canoe Creek, and two different, Canoe Creek Lakes, and then another neighborhood there. So we are tracking it. We also have created heat maps, which show if there are multiple complaints in areas. So, I mean, I want to be as transparent as possible. Whatever information that you want me to bring, I'll bring. I just kind of brought this with me because I just thought, well, just in case there are questions. And then we did meet with some residents today, which was really, really helpful. So we did find from them, hear, listen to them, and heard that some people do not want to call in. So they're going to help us find some of these folks that are not willing to call us. So whatever we can do to resolve this issue, we're on it. We did do some unidirectional flushing yesterday in Pine Chase, and there were, and all of the, there was only one hydrant that had any, bless you, any water resin that came out, and it was not, it didn't take long to flush it out. Now, that's not to say that some individual houses may not be experiencing some watercolor. They may have some, and we need to know about that. So, but that was really, that was great news, because in the past, that's not been the case.
Thank you. The IMEC system that we use to help process our water and provide the residents with drinking water has certainly been the culprit that has created this huge problem for us. But if we did not even have this system, do lines need to be flushed out regularly anyway?
Yes.
When you were in Tampa, did they flush out lines there? Did you get complaints there?
Oh, yes. So especially if you have any iron pipes, you'll get watercolor complaints. And even if you don't have iron pipes, it's, we actually get watercolor complaints in other areas, but we've determined they're not related to the resin issue. So it's, they may have a metal service line, or they may have, you know, it may be in a totally different area, it's not the same color, you know, it could be something internal, could be lots of different things. So we're, we've parsed out the ones that are specifically related to the resin color issue. But Tampa had, we had watercolor complaints in West Palm Beach. It's a common thing, no matter where you are. And for, you know, 29,000 accounts, you know, we're shooting for zero. And I'm not saying that there's not, you know, that we don't have an issue, that we're not, don't have an issue, but to not find any of those hydrants to have any of that material, that's, that's great. And we'll bring back the results of the TVing of the transmission main, and we're actually going to do some additional flushing. We're going to branch out a little bit and see what we find there. This is all part of solving it, but please, any of the public that has any issues, please let us know.
We, I know that we have multiple tests done on our water. Has any test come back that says that our water, because of the resin, is carcinogenic?
No, no. And the studies show right now that it just tends to pass through your body. So our water meets all state and federal drinking water standards.
To me, that's my biggest concern. We just need to assure the community that we're providing them with safe drinking water, and that is so essential. Do we have any other questions? We certainly appreciate the way that you and the staff have handled this. We know it has been a huge issue for all of us, and we appreciate the way that all of the staff have risen to the case and the cause and continue to-- of the staff have risen to the case and the cause and continue to work at this, and we thank you for all the extra time and effort and energy. Thank you so much.
Appreciate the team, and most of all, I appreciate the support of the council and the city manager in making sure we can get this done. And we'll, we're going to fix this.
Thank you.
Work until it's done.
Mr. Menzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item. I will be on vacation from July 2nd until July 12th. Mrs. Miller will be the acting city manager.
Hopefully, I'll have a job when she, when you get back.
That's right.
She always does an excellent job. Anything else?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. City manager, do you have any kind of update on the building expansion, this building expansion?
I do. The 90% plans were done by the architect, and it's getting ready to go to bid. Oh, there's Kevin. Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Felberling, interim Public Works Director. Right now, we're actually bidding the project out. It's actually on the street right now and being advertised. So, like I said, so we are in the process of, like I said, we are in the bidding process right now. So, hopefully, within the next 30 days or so, we should be able to get some funds or a result back for cost.
Awesome news. So, I know we used to get, like, the email update of the progress of projects and things, and I don't think we've been getting those for a little while. Can we reestablish that?
Sure. One of the reasons we were trying to get to the strategic plan and that because of the COVID and all that, but I will get that back out to you guys. We have a very good detailed list we're doing right now.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, for me, I don't know how the other council members feel. I don't need to know, like, every single thing that the departments are doing, but more just like the projects, kind of where the projects are.
We get that, and that's easy.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. I just want to say it was a, it was a pleasure to serve on council with Mr. Cooper, and he will be sorely missed, and his big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Councilwoman Raskew?
Ditto Mr. Trace's remarks on Mr. Cooper. The other part is, everybody have a happy Fourth of July, and enjoy yourselves and be safe.
Can I have a go-back?
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
I should have said the same thing about it. I'm mad at myself I didn't think about that, but yes, definitely will be missed. I've enjoyed sitting next to him for the last five years. He, you know, he's one of a kind.
Thank you. And I would like to say the same thing. It was a pleasure serving with Mr. Cooper. I always appreciate anyone who tells you where they feel and what they stand for and stand by their convictions, and he certainly did that. And we appreciate all the contributions that he made. I can't believe the many years that he spent serving our city. Must be some kind of record. With that, brings us to our Information Section, Reports Section. Thursday, July 1st, there'll be a CRA meeting here in City Hall Chambers at 6:00 PM. Monday, July 5th, city offices will be closed in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Thursday, July...
15.
...the 15th, we will have our city council meeting at 6:30 here in council chambers. There was a proclamation recognition of our Parks and Recreation Month that has been issued. I'd like to remind the staff of the availability of warrants list number 14. With that, there are no items on our agenda. With that, we will be adjourned.
It's exciting. It's been big right now.
I know. You got it. It's all exciting.